I would just note and welcome. The results have been certified. Michael Rubenstein is our new select board member. Thank you and welcome. And we'll now proceed with the election of a chair. Nominations are in order and no seconds are required. So I will take a nomination from John.
Yes, thank you very much. I would like very much to nominate someone who has been a real steady guiding hand to this select board, has been a good friend to all of us. I'm sure it's going to be true where Michael, our newest member is concerned as well, has been a leader and has been someone who brings people together. And in situations where sometimes it seems like there's no hope of finding consensus, oh my gosh, I just gave away who I'm about to nominate by looking at him. He, as the saying goes, he finds a way where there is no way. So I want to nominate our current incumbent chair Bernard Green to continue as chair.
All right, Bernard Green. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, is there a motion that nominations be closed? All right, it doesn't require a second. We have to take just take the vote on that. Let's call the roll. Mr. Green. Mr. Van Skoyak.
Aye.
Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Mr. Rubenstein.
Aye.
All right, the nominations are now closed. It has been moved that Bernard Green be elected chair of the board for the ensuing year. Those in favor of the motion will say aye, those opposed, no. Mr. Green.
Aye.
Mr. Van Skoyak.
Aye.
Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Mr. Perelman.
Aye.
Mr. Rubenstein.
Aye.
All right, a motion is carried by a vote of five to zero. And Bernard Green has been reelected chair of the select board for the ensuing year and will now take the chair.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, first order of business.
Bernard, can you leave your mic closer now?
All right. First order of business is to nominate and elect a vice chair. Do I have any nominations? That way, hold on. I nominate David Perelman. I'm not always smooth in these operations. I nominate David Perelman. Any other nominations? I move approval of David Perelman as vice chair of the select board. On favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
David Perelman.
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. I think that was a proper way of doing it.
Smooth as ever. I have to distribute the names.
Thank you.
So, so I'd like to thank the select board for giving me the opportunity to urge you as chair for another year. And welcome to the select board to Michael Rubenstein. We met over the weekend and had a very good discussion and I look forward to the contributions that he will make to the work of the select board for the town of Brookline. We'll be facing many challenges, local and national in origin, but we have, we have the resources and the commitment to meet those challenges. And we have many opportunities to do good things also for the benefit of the town and every resident and visitor of the town. So thank you for, for giving me this opportunity to be chair. And let's start our meeting unless anyone else has anything to say. Any announcements or updates from the select board? Paul.
Thank you Bernard and congratulations and to David as well. So I want to remind people, I've made this announcement in the past, but this coming Sunday, May 18th at 2:30, there'll be a tribute for Aaron Fierstein at Hunneman Hall at the Brookline Village Library on Washington Street. Aaron is quite an amazing, was a quite amazing individual who's best known for paying his employees after his mill up at Lawrence burnt to the ground frankly. And he paid them throughout and paid their health insurance and he was one of a kind. So there'll be a tribute for him. Barney Frank will be present to speak at that, at that tribute. So we're honored to have him, have him present as well as our chair. We'll be presenting a resolution. So that's Sunday, May 18th at 2:30.
Great, thank you. Michael.
Thank you very much and congratulations on being elected the chair. I would just like to recognize the dance department of the Brookline High School, which presented Progressions Dance Concert last week on May 8th and 9th and 10th. And I attended the evening of Thursday, May 8th and found the performance wonderful and invigorating and want to commend both the choreographers, the dancers, as well as the technical crew.
Thank you. David.
Also on May 18th at 1 o'clock is the Boston University commencement. We've each been invited to that. It's going to be logistically challenging for us to go to both, but I am sure some of us will avail ourselves of that opportunity.
Okay, I'd like to just announce that John and I attended the celebration of the life of Kitty Dukakis. It was a very moving and personal celebration of a woman who, in my opinion, had a huge impact on the world and the country, separate from her husband. I mean, her husband was, is still an incredible political person here in Brookline, but Kitty Dukakis also played a huge role in his success and in encouraging him to do things such as bringing more women into state government that he may get most of the credit for, but he, but she was really the force behind that. So we're really sorry to have lost Kitty Dukakis, but it was really moving, it was really moving experience to participate in the celebration at the high school. John.
I just want to add to what our, excuse me, our chair just said. One of the things that made it remarkable for me, and I think for others too, is first of all, let's note that the mayor of Boston was there with her child and sat right near where Bernard and I were privileged to sit. The governor was there. There were people from past years administrations at the state level, but the, the point I wanted to emphasize is there were a fair number of people who were prominent during, let's call it the Dukakis years in state government and of course his, the banner year when he ran for president, quite a number of people there who had their roots in some sense at town meeting. So there we were in the same auditorium where town meeting will meet at the end of this month, rubbing elbows with folks who got their start at town meeting and then ended up either being, in the case of Mike Dukakis, a governor or in that governor's administration or involved in a campaign of a presidential candidate at the national level. Brookline is kind of special for that reason and it was, it was all observable in the auditorium the other day. Also, you might imagine that there's a certain amount of security concern when people of that prominence, governor, mayor, Boston, et cetera, you know, appear at events in Brookline. And I think it was handled very well by all involved, including, excuse me, the, the memorial service that was organized by the Brezniak firm, David Brezniak being one of our Brookline products and a really good guy who I've known for decades, literally. And he was there and he, his people did a terrific job of putting that, helping to put that together with the Dukakis family. So it was a good, it was a good day.
Chair.
Just quick couple announcements. One, tomorrow is the Police Officer of the Year Award Ceremony. The 2024 Police Officer of the Year is Detective Shania Hattori. And the 2024 Life Saving Award is going to officers Boris Frugovik and Mark Hetnick. I want to thank them all for their service. Also, last year because of indisposition, we weren't able to celebrate Detective Daniel Avila, who is the 2023 Police Officer of the Year. So we'll be able to celebrate that tomorrow at 11 at the Public Safety Building. So we look forward to that and congratulations to those officers and really appreciate all of their work for this community. Next week is National Public Works Week on Tuesday, May 20th from 12:30 to 5:00 p.m. at the Municipal Service Center, which is 870 Hammond Street. There will be an open house at the Municipal Service Center. You'll be able to see all the incredible things that the Public Works Department gets up to over there. Talking about water supplies, sanitary sewers, parks and open space, urban forests, all of the really interesting things. It's a family friendly event. We actually have members of the schools come in in the morning and then it's open to the public in the afternoon. So it's a great event. We love it. Really strongly encourage folks to come out, rain or shine. Again, 12:30 to 5:00, open house at the Municipal Service Center, 870 Hammond Street on Tuesday, May 20th.
Let me just add, tomorrow we have Expenditure and Revenue Committee meeting. So a couple of the board members will not be able to attend the event at the Public Safety Building, but I urge other board members to attend. It's really appreciated when select board members attend these recognitions of town employees, particularly in the police department, who's been through some rough times and they really appreciate when we come out and support them, so.
And you said that's at 11?
11 o'clock, yes.
At the community room?
Yes.
Public Safety Building.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, public comment. Tiffany, tell us the rules.
Thank you for joining us for public comment. This is an opportunity for us to hear your perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you. Each person speaking tonight is limited to three minutes. You don't need to use the entire time, but you may if you like. Once 15 minutes has been met, there's an opportunity at the conclusion of the select board's business for additional comments. Members of the public sometimes raise questions during public comment. We may be able to provide a quick answer to a question, but are more likely to work with staff to get a more thorough answer and respond over email. The onscreen timer will flash orange when you have 30 seconds remaining and red when your time is nearly up. Please conclude your remarks at that time. If you have more to say, you're welcome to send an email to board members expressing your thoughts in greater detail. Any person speaking must begin their comment by identifying themselves with their full name and either their Brookline precinct number or address. The first individual who signed up to speak tonight is Kathleen Curtin. No from here.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Curtin and I live at 22 Sheaf Street. And I'm the owner of the property there. It's a two-family house. I'm here to speak tonight with you about the project that is proposed for Heath, Sheaf Street and Hammond Street. It's a six-story building with an underground parking garage. And we have attended several Zoom meetings with the planning board and there are some issues that we think are not being handled correctly as far as the neighborhood is concerned. First one is the drainage system that has been proposed for this. It's a drainage system that's going to be directly next to my house and the house behind, which is 557 Heath Street. The regulation is that it's to be 10 feet from the property line. They want a variance to make it five feet from the property line. And it's very dangerous for our houses because I have a 105-year-old house with a stone cement basement. I do not get water in my basement regularly, on a regular basis, just in extreme instances, I think twice in the last 40 years. And this drainage system might cause my cellar to flood all the time. And the same thing with 557 Heath Street that's owned by Mrs. Crowley. We want the, the regulation not to, to be enforced, at least the way it is. We would like the, the drainage system moved to some other location away from our properties so that we won't face flooding of cellars every time there's an extreme rain, rainstorm. The second issue I'd like to bring up is they want a variance on the location of the entrance to the garage. It's supposed to be 20 feet from the property line. They want it to be 16 feet from the property line, which would be one foot in from the edge of the building. They're going to have a noise maker at the entrance to the garage every time a car goes in or out. This would be right next to my house and would be 24/7. And my house is not soundproof. It was built in 1920, but it's an excellent house. But I don't want to listen to that all the time. The regulation is 20 feet from the property line and it should be enforced and no variance given. They also want a parking set aside 20 feet from the entrance to the garage, which would mean that it would be 15 feet in front of my house, eliminating all parking in front of my house. I have a right to have guests. I have a right to have workmen come and, and do, you know, plumbers and electricians and so forth. I have two tenants who need to move their cars around because they have to park one behind the other and they need to have a place to put their cars. You can't set that up as a permanent no parking zone just to accommodate this, this project. It's unfair to the neighborhood. All of these things are unfair to the neighborhood. And the most egregious thing is they have refused.
That concludes your time.
They have refused to do a study of the hazardous waste site on their property, which is the central cleaners.
Thank you. That concludes your time.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Janice Khan.
Good evening. Janice Khan, town meeting member, precinct 15. And I'm going to pick up actually where Kathleen ended. So thanks you for this opportunity to talk to you. So the neighborhood residents in close proximity to the chief Heath-Hammond Street proposed 40B project continue to be concerned about the environmental health concerns raised by demolition and blasting at the site of both an auto body shop and the central cleaners. The dry cleaners has been at 621 Hammond Street for over 60 years and the dry cleaners for the vast majority of those years used solvents such as perchloroethylene, PERC during that time. The developers in their Phase 1 and Phase 2 initial environmental site assessment specifically excluded the dry cleaner's location despite already having control of that site. In reviewing the initial project eligibility application to the Mass Housing Partnership, which is a funding source, in Appendix 1, which is a checklist for the attachments, it shows that all of the required attachments were included, but under additional attachments, if applicable, 2.h, which is environmental site assessment, was not checked, despite saying in the narrative that the project includes two foreign three family homes described as dilapidated but which, but which are in fact affordable housing rental units in the neighborhood and an auto body shop and a dry cleaner. Despite urgings to the developer by the chair of the ZBA panel reviewing this 40B project to do the environmental assessment during the public process, the developer is continuing to insist on receiving the comprehensive permit first and then doing the environmental assessment at that potentially toxic site. Residents of the area are legitimately concerned about the potential public health issues that may be raised during demolition and blasting at that project site. They're also concerned that once the comprehensive permit is issued, that the public process will have ended and they will have no more voice in what's found during the construction process. I have been impressed by the ZBA panel. The ZBA's conditions are thorough, a thorough attempt at being responsive to the residents' concerns, but the comprehensive permit will still leave many unanswered questions even beyond the environmental concerns such as the draining, which was just mentioned, two and a butter. And I, I really urge that the town officials and department heads, all who have been watching this closely, really urge that this comprehensive permit be delayed pending further analysis. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jonathan Golden. After Jonathan will be Nina Crowley.
Thank you. Jonathan Golden, town meeting member, precinct 11, longtime listener, first time caller. I want to congratulate Chair Green on his reelection, the vice chair, David Perelman to become the vice chair, and certainly to welcome Michael to the select board. Tonight, I'd like to speak to three prominent issues, important issues in last week's local election that are crucial to the future of Brookline. The good news is that I'm confident that all of us in this room are committed to addressing all three issues. These issues are commercial development, fiscal accountability, and voter turnout. I was so pleased to hear how all three candidates for select board spoke directly for the need for more commercial development in Brookline and absolute necessity to address the structural deficit in our town. I appreciate the cooperation of the town administrator, select board, and other key stakeholders on commercial development to date. Moving forward, please count on me to be a partner and ally in any way that I can. In terms of fiscal accountability, this was a major theme of the school committee race. Six years ago, this community worked together to build a new Driscoll School. As a Driscoll parent, I am forever grateful. The new Driscoll School override vote meant the fiscal responsibility to add sections to Driscoll and build capacity to the system as a whole. Driscoll has added capacity to the system as a whole by having four BEEP classrooms, one special ed BEEP classroom, and the pilot middle school Winter House program. This is why I was saddened to learn about the Driscoll Vice Principal Reduction and I will address this issue at the school committee meeting on Thursday in public comment. But I'm incredibly grateful for the good work of the town-school partnership to meet the needs of both school and town. Whatever the solution is to this vice principal question, let us not let $130,000 let us not let the one-hundred-thirty-thousand-dollar position impact the growth of the Driscoll School population and all of the programs housed there. Finally, I am guessing that many of this room saw a robust online discussion about voter turnout. If you read the comments, you come away with the following conclusions. Too many voters don't know who we are, don't know who the members of the select board are, town meeting members, et cetera. And I would say that's on us as leaders, not on them as voters. Too many voters feel that they do not have access to the information that they need to make choices and voting. Again, I would say that is on us, on leaders, not them. Many voters expressed they do not believe that leaders have taken meaningful action, that priorities are important to them. I want to explore that idea forward and understand what's our responsibility as leaders, not what they're missing as voters. While some in town will offer a poetic and thoughtful case for the status quo, all of us as current leaders have new realities to face. What can we do together to expand commercial development, uphold fiscal accountability, and increase voter turnout? I think there are many possibilities, and I hope we will cooperate together to explore those possibilities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Nina Crowley.
Hi, my name is Nina Crowley. I own five-five-seven Heath Street.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
My name is Nina Crowley. I own five-five-seven Heath Street. It's the building very next to the proposed project. So following the previous two neighbors' comments, I have additional comments I want to make. And the ZBA goes through this hearing process, but it looks, it seems to me, the ZBA, when they drafting the decision document, did not put neighbors' concerns into consideration. For example, in the decision draft, the ZBA already put environmental site assessment study as a condition for building permit, which we have not arrived to that position, that point during the order hearing. Because all what I heard is ask developer to do the environmental site study before the comprehensive permit issued. Now, all in a sudden, in front of us, this become a condition which took the public and the board out of the oversight during the process. So that is not okay, this neighborhood, because with this highly potential, highly polluted land, neighborhood have a right to know what's the pollution level is. Is that suitable for residential building? And this has to be known before comprehensive permit to be issued. And this is also required, the document at the beginning of the application, which is oversight by the state agency and also oversight by the town officials when they review the application. Number two, ZBA, the project, number two, for stormwater system, and this require the variance. And the neighborhood have our own consultant, geotechnical consultant, made the recommendation to move the system away from the neighbor's building. But it doesn't look like ZBA is taking any of our consultant recommendations to consider this. And the developer does have enough land to put a stormwater system somewhere else, not right next to our building and also have to, you know, ask for variance. This going to flood our system. The most importantly, they put this in the condition letter says this is existing condition, which is not true. So they are shielding the developer's liability, future liability for a building, future flooding. This is not correct. So that is what I have problem with. Thank you for your listening.
And that concludes the time for public comment at the beginning of the meeting.
Pardon me, Tiffany?
That's all for public comment at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay. Okay, thank you for those comments and we will follow up Zoom to, you know, just make sure that things are done properly. Next, Ms. Laney, aside items, I'd like to start off with minutes from April twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five. Does anyone have corrections or additions to the minutes? No? I'm sorry.
This is just a small correction. I believe there's a reference to the word units that should be unites.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Okay, with that amendment to the minutes, I move approval of minutes for April twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay, next, I'd like to separately vote items four B and four C. Item four B, which Chad talked about briefly, is a proclamation recognizing May eighteen through May twenty-four as National Public Works Week in Brookline. There are a number of programs and events to help people understand the work of the Department of Public Works, including tomorrow on Zoom, an evening with the commissioner and her team, which gives everyone an opportunity to talk to and ask questions of the commissioner and learn a little bit about DPW and all the things that they do, many of which people have no clue that that happens, unless they are the victims of flooding or other type of problem that DPW steps in and helps with. You can find other events on the landing page of the town's website, including the annual open house on May twentieth, where children from age five to ninety-five can enjoy inspecting and climbing on trucks and other equipment used by DPW. It's just a very interesting afternoon. And there are other events that you can see on that page. So item four C is a proclamation recognizing May thirty-first as Arbor Day in Brookline. The proclamation recognizes the importance of Arbor Day and is a key component of maintaining the town's designation as a Tree City USA, which is a designation bestowed by the National Arbor Day Foundation. And the town has held this status for over three decades. So those are the two proclamations that I think are very significant and important. Any other thoughts from the select board on those or anything? David?
Just have a question regarding the selection of May thirty-first for the town's Arbor Day. There's a National Arbor Day that's April twenty-fifth, and I'm just curious about how this date was selected.
I don't know the history of that, but I will. That's an interesting question.
Commissioner Chute is actually online as well.
I see Commissioner Chute is on.
Evening. Yes, Erin Chute, Commissioner of Public Works. Thank you for that question. We are really proud to be a Tree City USA community for over three decades. The date that we have selected is May thirty-first in Brookline in alliance with Spring Fest. So we're having a celebration at Olmstead Park, celebrating, really, we have various educational activities, opportunities. We're going to host a tree identification walk and have some special activities to celebrate the importance and value of trees. So we thought it was a really great opportunity to have something meaningful for the community to come out to and participate in.
Thank you. That sufficient for you?
Yes.
Okay, great. Paul?
Bernard, I had a quick question before we go to the omnibus vote. I do have two questions about, a question about four K and four I.
Could we hold on those and I just want to vote on these two, on two items?
Sorry.
Then move to the others. So unless there are any other questions or comments, I'd like to move approval of items four B and four C, the proclamation for DPW and Arbor Day. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay, next, I'd like to take items four D to four T in omnibus fashion unless a board member like Mr. Warren would like to take an item out to discuss separately. I'd like to note that items four P to four T are one-day licenses and do not require hearing, just a vote of the select board. So, Paul?
Yeah, just a quick question. I noticed that four K is the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Community Relations. Four I is the select board, three thousand plus, being moved from professional services to, looks like meals or... Is that for a conference? I'm just curious what's going on.
Sure, for ODEICR, there was, it's for programming events. In this case, it's for AAPI Heritage Month, which just happened. And looking forward towards Juneteenth, it's making sure that the money is in the right accounts to fund those things. On the select board front, it's to cover the cost of Public Service Recognition Week, which just happened last week. So we're moving money into those accounts to make sure that we have enough to cover at the end of the fiscal year.
And I'm just curious from the budgeting process, Chad, so were we expecting professional services to help with that? And then we decided to do it ourselves, or is it just we found that this bucket was light and we needed to move money over?
That's where the extra money is this year.
Okay, gotcha.
It's opportunistic.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, with that, I'd like to move approval of items four B to four T. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay. Next, our main calendar. Starting off, the CBDG five-year consolidated plan is put off until we figure out what's happening at the federal government in terms of, you know, funding programs. So we'll go to boards and commissions and appointments. First, we have the question of appointing one of the following candidates to the Brookline Housing Authority. And those candidates are Erica Pariba, Arlene Hill, and Karen Rojas. Tiffany presented or prepared a very useful memorandum on the three candidates and the interviews that we held a couple of weeks ago. And her memo included links to the actual videos of our interviews, which I understand all select board members reviewed. And hopefully, we have a good understanding of who would make the best candidate for this position. Any discussion this? Yeah, Paul?
I guess, you know, I want to say that having sat through each of the candidate interviews and also I really appreciated you putting this summary together so we'll re-watch them. It's a tough choice. There's three great candidates with different perspectives and experiences. So, you know, where we land is really not a statement of the others that don't get appointed, but they're all really very capable individuals.
Thank you. That's a very important point, and I hope that with that, with that, all the candidates continue working with VHA and working in the town on behalf of VHA residents and other residents of our town. So because I agree, all three were quite extraordinary applicants. Any further discussion? Okay, John?
Is the appropriate procedure to take nominations or what do you think is the best?
Well, we have three nominations already, and what I was going to suggest is that I go person by person and people indicate who they would like to select, and we'll just see who comes out on top.
Excellent.
Okay, unless someone has a different procedure.
I think that's the procedure we followed in the-
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so between Erica Pariba, Arlene Hill, and Karen Rojas, John Van Scoyac?
I would like to cast a vote in favor of Erica Pariba, but again, as others have said, the other two candidates, you couldn't ask for better candidates. But Erica Pariba, I think, looks like a really good choice right now.
Okay, Paul Warren?
Karen Patina?
And Karen Rojas.
Oh, Rojas, I'm sorry. Patina Rojas, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, David Perman?
Would also go with Erica Pariba.
Okay, Michael?
I would vote for Karen Rojas.
And my vote is for Karen Rojas also. Okay, so. And we will notify all the candidates in the next few days.
Do you want to do a second vote to actually vote for her instead of individually? Usually, we'll do the individual cast and then we'll say question of approving Karen Patina Rojas, and give everyone the chance to vote.
What would we do without you? What would I do without you? Okay, so I move that we approve Karen Rojas as the person to be appointed to the Brookline Housing Authority Board of Trustees. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Is that good? Okay, John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Okay, next, and Tiffany, you've prepared a notification to the three candidates. And I think the housing authority will set their own procedure for swearing her in. Okay, next, question of appointed Pre Gendier to the Conservation Commission, again, here, I'm sorry, to the Conservation Commission. Any comments or questions about that nomination?
I think we're fortunate to have her.
Yes, I agree. So all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, question of appointing Elizabeth Stryer to the Brookline Commission on Disability. Any questions or comments? Again, a good applicant, and we're very fortunate to be able to appoint her to the commission, in my opinion. So I move approval of Elizabeth Stryer to the Brookline Commission on Disability. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I have to get used to this new order.
And you're going to call him Michael Salmon.
Yeah, right.
Now you put that idea.
Anyway, okay. Next, we have an executive session. So I'd like to, we're going into executive session to address an issue of litigation and negotiations. I move that the select board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy related to bargaining with union employees and a litigation matter. Bargaining with union employees and litigation must be discussed in executive session because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the town. And the chair so declares that an executive session to be therefore necessary. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. We will return to open session after our executive session meeting, which is scheduled for about seven fifteen. I can't guarantee that, but we will try.
Check, check. Check, check. Check, check.
Check, check.
Okay, this is the continuation of the Select Board meeting following our executive session. Next item on the agenda is warrant article reviews, starting off with a review of Article Two, Approval of Collective Bargaining Agreements. And we have to reopen that, right?
Right.
And I move approval of reconsideration. All in favor of warrant Article Two, Approval of Collective Bargaining Agreements. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyeck?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perelman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And I guess we announced that we agreed to the settlement that was reached with the Teamsters and three ASME locals for a 2% increase for a one-year period, retroactive to July 1, 2024. And that will be the collective bargaining agreement that we will approve in warrant Article Two. So I move favorable action on warrant Article Two with those collective bargaining agreement details included. All in favor? John Van Scoyeck?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perelman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Melissa, did I get that right?
Yes, you did. You didn't even need me for that one.
Pardon me?
You didn't even need me for that one.
Yeah. Okay, but you're usually very, very critical to get these things right. Okay, next, warrant Article 26 for reconsideration. This relates to prohibiting the imposition of broker's fees on tenants in rental housing. And the changes coming from Advisory Committee really are minor changes just to make it a little more coherent and to, I think, correct a scrivener's error in the recitals. Is that correct, Melissa?
Yeah, the board didn't have the Advisory Committee language at the time of the vote, so now that you do, I think that the moderator is urging, he's looking for one motion to deal with. And so as long as the board feels comfortable with the Advisory Committee motion, that would be the recommendation. If you are on the combined reports, you can find the Advisory Committee motion starting on page 26-11, so that you can see the language there.
Okay, any questions? I mean, I have the language.
Yeah, sorry, very simple changes, right?
Yeah, 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 okay. I move reconsideration of warrant Article 26 with respect to broker's fees. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyeck?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perelman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. So we reconsidered. I move approval of warrant Article 26 as amended by the Advisory Committee to make some minor changes to eliminate some confusion with respect to the legislative proposals that refers to and other changes correcting scrivener's error. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyeck?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perelman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Finally, warrant Article Nine, Annual Budget Appropriations Article. So Melissa, tell us what we're doing here.
So when we last voted on the budget, I reminded you that I was still looking to get information from the school department around the group health savings that they were capturing from some of the staffing changes that they made. I received that information on Thursday from Susan. I've gone ahead and validated that against what we had budgeted for the group health budget. And so the adjustments that you see in front of you are essentially making the reductions in the group health budget and then redirecting that to the school department appropriation. And you have the draft budget tables as part of your packet as well. I will say that there are a couple of other changes that I'm hoping to get information on in time for the budget motion. On Monday is the deadline for any motion related to the budget, so we might have one additional tweak. If not, we'll have to deal with it in the fall.
Okay, do we need, so it sounds like we need to reconsider our previous vote and vote Article Nine as amended. And the additional changes, we'll just have to deal with in the fall, huh?
Well, I'm hoping to get it this week.
Or we come back and reconsider again? Pardon me?
If I can get it this week, we'll get it in your packet and then you'll vote next Tuesday. And I suspect that there are other budget-related items you'll be voting on Tuesday anyway.
Okay, okay. So I move reconsideration of warrant Article Nine, which we will reconsider again in the future. So all in favor of reconsideration, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyeck?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perelman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So I now move approval of warrant Article Nine as amended by, as Melissa indicated, to make the changes with respect to the school budget. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyeck?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perelman?
Aye.
Michael Rubenstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and that is the final item on the agenda at 7:10 p.m.
My God.
Isn't that great?
Any public comment?
Yes.
Any public comment?
Please. Not even you, Regina?
Somebody. Okay.
Okay. Okay, so with that, I will end the meeting. Thank you.